Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Commission for November 24th, 2008. This time I'll call the meeting to order and ask for any public comment on any item not listed on the agenda this evening. And seeing none, we'll move forward. Adoption of Planning Commission meeting minutes, there are none this evening, so we'll move forward into our first hearing, which is CU 08-07 and SP 08-15. At this time, I will read my information for the audience. A staff report has been prepared for the application and has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed criteria which are contained in the staff report along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for this application. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code, and the hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart to my left. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a slip and give it to the planning staff before the hearing or before you speak. All letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they can be submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply, in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing for a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, Oregon revised statutes 197-796 requires us to announce the following. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damage in Circuit Court. At this time, I'll ask if any commissioners have any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare.
I've been in and around the site here.
As have I.
And I have too.
As have I.
Okay, looks like we all visited the site at one point or another, and if there's not any record question on that, we'll move forward. And tonight, we'll start with the, as we always do, with the staff report. Christina?
Thank you, Chair Powell. This is a conditional use 08-07 and SP 08-15. The reason we are here tonight is the applicant is requesting a conditional use. I'm gonna wait a moment. Alright, thanks. I feel like I'm on a TV, or talk radio.
Vujaday.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use for the drive-through in the coffee shop, which in the mixed-use corridor, dash one zone, requires a conditional use approval. If this project did not have the drive-through, it would be reviewed through the type-two staff process. As I mentioned, this property is owned MUC dash one. It's along Malala Avenue at the intersection of Buckner, and it's near Hillcrest and Beverly Drive. Behind the site are approximately ten single-family homes, and beyond that is the Oregon City Cemetery. This is an aerial photograph. This was previously sassy cabs. It was the house that's on the site that's being proposed to be demolished, and it was the office for sassy cabs. The proposed project is a new site for a State Farm Insurance Office to be located at 1115 Malala Avenue, which will include a separate coffee shop with a drive-through access onsite. The drive-through on the coffee shop will be accessed from Buckner Lane and will exit only onto Malala Avenue. The site is ZONE MUC one, and the proposed office space consists of a State Farm Insurance building with two additional retail spaces, one facing Malala Avenue, one facing Buckner. The proposed project requires the demolition of the existing taxi cab office, as I said, and the construction of the new office facility with a footprint of 4,919 square feet, with the separate coffee shop being 1,031 square feet. There are proposed 32 interior seats within the coffee shop building. This is a 3D rendering looking from the east to the west, and Malala Avenue is in front, on the front frontage, and Buckner is to the right. This is the view of the proposed building from Malala Avenue, looking at its intersection of Buckner and Malala. The main entrance is accessed at the corner, and there are additional entrances for the two-side ground-floor retail on Buckner and on Malala Avenue, as well as from the interior of the parking lot. The proposed coffee shop drive-through and interior seating has direct pedestrian access off Malala Avenue. This is a site layout showing kind of an L-shaped building with the two-story portion in the center with two one-story wings and the one-story coffee shop to the south. As mentioned previously, ingress and egress will be through Buckner, and then the drive aisle for the coffee shop will go onto Malala Avenue with both right and left-hand turns. This is showing the elevation of the main building. The top one is looking from the parking lot in, and the bottom one is looking from Malala Avenue. The top one is looking from Buckner to the building. Notice a slight grade change. And the bottom one is looking pretty much from the coffee shop building north on the And this is the elevation of the coffee shop and a plan view of the interior with the seating. The conditional use criteria tonight, and I'll just briefly read them. That the use is listed as a conditional use in underlying district, which it is. That the characters of the site are suitable for the proposed use considering size, shape, location, topography, and existence of improvements and natural features. That the site and proposed development are timely considering the adequacy of transportation systems, public facilities, and services existing or planned for the area affected by the use. That the proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the primary uses listed in the underlying district. And the proposal satisfies the goals and policies of the city's comprehensive plan, which apply to the proposed use. I've identified pertinent comprehensive plan criteria. One, effective use of land. Ensure that property planned for residential, commercial, office, and industrial use is used efficiently, and that the land is developed following principles of sustainable development. Two, corridors. Focus transit-oriented, high-intensity, mixed-use development along selected transit corridors. Goal 2.5, retail and neighborhood commercial. Encourage the provisions of appropriately scaled services to neighborhoods. Drive-through appropriately scaled for its use in anticipated capacity. Retention of existing employers. Retain existing employers, both public and private. Encourage them to expand their operations within the city. Retail services. Allow a variety of retail outlets and shopping areas to meet the needs of the community and nearby rural areas. Transportation system. Recognize the importance of the land-use transportation link and encourage businesses to locate in areas already served by the type of transportation systems they need. Multimodal options. Develop and maintain a transportation system that provides and encourages a variety of multimodal travel options to meet the mobility needs of all Oregon City residents. And finally, safety. Develop and maintain a transportation system that is safe. I need to go back. We need some help. Would you mind getting back to the beginning? Staff report. Well, that is working. The applicant has proposed to provide full street improvements along Malala Avenue and Buckner to meet the Malala Avenue Improvement Plan. You might notice in the layout that the buildings look a little farther setback, and there was a discussion about what to do about on-street parking on Malala Avenue. In the long run, on-street parking is potentially perceived as being an option on Malala Avenue. With Buckner, Beverly, Hillcrest, that little segment, there could definitely be a node of build-out with projects about this scale. And with that many buildings, it makes more sense to have on-street parking, and understanding once that corridor is built. Nancy Crushhour, at this time, was very unsupportive of allowing on-street parking, but also, as a city, wanted to make sure we gained the appropriate right-of-way for future use. And so what has been done with this layout is, you'll see kind of an extra eight feet, and that really is inside the right-of-way and is right now part of a landscaped area that, in one time, if on-street parking is be done, I mean, the sidewalk would have to be reconfigured, but we could provide on-street parking on Malala Avenue in the future. If, you know, future planning commissions and city engineers determine that it would be safe and feasible once this area gets built out, or as this area gets built out. So that was a large discussion area, and that was kind of the compromise deemed, that we want the right-of-way because you're never gonna get it back, and we want it sited it. And they were willing to provide that, and we had the authority to ask it, so we thought this was an adequate compromise. In regards to the conditions and the comprehensive plan policies, which I will go back to, first let me go to the comprehensive part. The conditional use criteria. When the Planning Commission previously looked at a conditional use for a coffee shop, some of the major comments were, is this an efficient use of the property? Is this truly ancillary? And, you know, is this safe? And so we worked with the applicant to try to get them to a level higher than the previous conditional use application. I think on this level, they had stepped to the plate. They provided, you know, 32 interior spaces, and it's gonna be a truly functioning coffee shop that also has drive-through. It's clearly, the coffee shop is ancillary building to the larger development, which is the State Farm Office and two retail wings. And it's sited in a location that's far enough away from the Buckner intersection to allow adequate onsite queuing on the parking lot. And I'm gonna back up. If you see, the main issue with the previous conditional use for the coffee shop on Malala Avenue and Division was their adequate queue spacing. And our transportation engineers identified queue spacing for nine parking, nine to 11 cars. And while, if the fully 11 people wanted to wait in the queue, which would be quite a long queue, and I don't know if that would get that way, but it would not impact the functionality of Buckner or Malala. It may impact the functionality of getting out of the parking space. And one thing that the applicant has done is identified the six parking spaces closest to the coffee shop for employees only, knowing that, once the employees park for the day, even in the rush for the coffee queue parking, it's mainly in the morning, that they'd understand that they were there for the day, and they wouldn't be constrained about getting out. And the open spaces closest towards Buckner would be open for clients and retail customers. I would like to add one condition of approval that was inadvertently left out between Bob Colson and myself. It's a pretty obvious one, but it's always nice to add it to a condition of approval. And I'd like to add number 19. Prior to the certificate of occupancy, a "do not enter" sign shall be installed at the drive-through entrance at Malala Avenue per city engineer's requirements. It was always assumed either one or two "do not entry" signs would be required right there at Malala in the drive-through, but it wasn't explicitly put in the conditions of approval, so I just wanted to add that on there. Everyone assumed they were gonna be doing it anyway. Regarding the Malala Avenue corridor as an appropriate corridor to put conditional uses, some of the reasons in 2004 when we added conditional uses to the comprehensive, I mean, to the conditional use chapter, was to really be able to look at each conditional use application for the drive-through and say, is this appropriate to, well, our Malala Avenue or Seventh Street? And are there any mitig, any conditions that could be placed on it? You know, on location, or this or that? Or is it just a use for the site that's not appropriate? And I know the Planning Commission wrestled with that, with the last one, and I think I took some cues from your conversation from the last one and gave directions to this applicant. On staff's level, I feel that they've done as much as they possibly can in designing and locating the coffee shop on this site. I could not give them any, another recommendation to get them closer to approval. And so either this is an appropriate for Malala Avenue and maybe the site, or it's not, but I think I've done as much as I can for the applicant to get them sited at the safest location, the best circulation, the most, to show it as ancillary to the larger development. Initially, they weren't a two-story building. We got them to a two-story building. We encouraged them to put the coffee shop at the far corner, to do just the ingress/egress onto Malala Ave, I mean, there's the egress onto Malala Avenue for the drive-through. So they've done a lot of iterations of redesign with us. On this level, I am supportive, because I think the product that has been created is quite good compared to what was initially turned in. So on staff level, I am giving conditional use approval, recommendation for approval with this. And I'm open for any questions the Planning Commission may have, and if you want a specific finding for the conditional use sections or the comprehensive plan sections, I can go into detail and give more insight, but I don't feel I need to go through each one unless you have a specific one you want to talk about.
Okay.
And I do know there is one resident here from Buckner, and we're gonna be entering her email that she sent me about an hour ago into the record, but she also will be making public comment. And her concerns, living on Buckner, I know it's a dead-end street, and, you know, in taking lefts and getting in and out of there on Malala Avenue, it definitely has problems. This street, like a lot of them, you know, they're never gonna meet warrants for a traffic light. And so what can we do as a city to help them? You know, I think we've done a lot in regards to the Malala Avenue Improvement Plan with the center turn lane. And with this situation, most of the, for people that are trying to get out in the morning, they're gonna be turning, you know, right or left, but they're not gonna have specific conflicting movements with the people that are coming into Buckner Lane, because they'll be in a center turn lane waiting. And the neighbor, Ms. Kreshmer, did I say that correctly? Okay. She, her indication is that there will be a conflict with people going southbound in the center turn lane, waiting to turn left, and she is in the right-hand, right-hand lane of Buckner, and there's a conflict, excuse me, the left-hand, trying to turn left on Buckner, and there'll be a conflict, because they're gonna have to let the people in the center turn lane in. And that is a potential conflict. John Replinger, our engineer for transportation, three David Evans and Associates, did review the application. I just wanna read briefly his comments, which are found in, let me give you the exhibit. It's exhibit six of your packet. But briefly, John Replinger, the city's consulting traffic engineer, concurred with Michael R., the applicant's traffic engineer, that the traffic analysis letter met the city's requirements for TAL and found that development proposed did not require off-site mitigation measures to address transportation impacts of the development. He also concurred with the engineer that the proposed configuration for access and safety in the driveway locations, design restrictions were appropriate. The drive-through access will not have an adverse effect on the transportation system, public facilities, or services. So he's taken a big-picture look. And the public comment tonight is, you know, someone who lives on Buckner and has a day-to-day, you know, interest and affect by this development. And so if, at a staff level, I can't really address her concerns particularly, since I'm not a transportation engineer. All I have is what the big picture, what John Replinger, and if you wish, if you do want more information, we can continue this hearing to a new date and give me feedback of what you want from our transportation engineer to say. And so, I mean, we do have that opportunity. I don't really have much more to provide context for her comments, other than the big picture, that the larger transportation system is not affected by this. So that's what I have right now.
Okay. Questions? Commissioners, one?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Can you, just, 'cause I didn't find it, just some of the distances from, say, the curb to, the curb to sidewalk? I just wanna understand some of the relationships of the building to the property line to...
Sure. The building is about five feet from the property line. There's about five feet of landscaping, which you can actually see right there, my little air glass. That's a five-feet setback. Then there is just an extra-large sidewalk right here. And this is the Malala Avenue Boulevard plan with the tree wells.
Okay.
And some, I'm sorry, and landscaping right here. This is where the extra area that we had for...
Oh, that's landscaping.
Yeah. So this is lawn, right here.
Oh, okay.
And that's, that's the kind of holdover space for future parking.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just wanna understand how it works now and how it would work later.
Yeah. It would have worked later, is the whole, I mean, the whole sidewalk would be reported. It would have to be, and reconfigured. But it is right-of-way. We would never have to pay for it.
Okay.
That's usually expensive things, not necessarily the construction of the curb.
And I think this would be the time to ask it. And so Nancy Crushhour, the city engineer, recommended at this time that we not have off-street parking along Malala.
At this location, we...
What was the why?
She needs a larger, well, she needs a specific study area. The Malala Boulevard Improvement Plan looked at long range, what are we gonna do? Where do we have ability to gain right-of-way, where don't we have? And so if you look at the Boulevard Plan that was approved in 2001, certain areas have a, they give us authority to get future right-of-way for parking. And in areas where, you know, there's some constrainer areas of Malala Avenue that are already built out, there's no reason to get future right-of-way, because you'll never, you're never gonna get parking, because everything's built out. So that's what the plan helps us do. And what Nancy does not want is on-street parking at this time until some of the other lots are built out, and she can do an actual corridor study. Because parking right, if you, parking right now on Malala Avenue, while it's a great traffic calmer, I think a much higher study will need to be done to see when it's appropriate and where it would be appropriate.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, I just, on page five, it said the coffee shop was gonna be open eight to five. And you talked about early morning. I guess, if we're talking about traffic, a couple of issues. In the previous application we had for a coffee shop, we, there were the potential of a left-hand turn out of the drive-through in a very complicated traffic flow.
Right.
And the city's not seeing, or staff has not seen, a problem with a left-hand turn at, I guess that's why I was concerned about what time this coffee shop's gonna be open.
Right. Well, I can, I can let the applicant speak to the time, but one thing, the difference with this one is, if you are at the window for this coffee shop, you have one more space in front. You see where the window's located, the middle of the building. So one of the requirements that Mr. Replinger had while this was designed is, we want that one car storage, you know, so you can put your coffee down and figure out where you're going. And then you do have the center turn lane on Malala Avenue, and so that's something that you did not have with the other project, is you can take a two-stage left turn on peak hour times. That really is a game changer in regards to the functionality.
Compared to the other one, yes.
Yeah, the functionality of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And site distance is there.
I have a couple of questions. Did you look across the street at any site issues with a two-story building where there's now only a single-story building with the view of Mount Hood? Did we review that at all? I'm trying to think, I mean, I drove by and I looked, and I just couldn't really picture. I'm just wondering if we're going to have any issues with that.
Well, the building across the street's one story.
Yeah, but you've got a look, and you've got a view, you know, from across the street. You're looking out, today, there's a one-story small building. You can look beyond that and out into the, you know, casket, out in the Mount Hood. With a two-story building, is that gonna be a problem? Are we gonna see issues with that? From across the street? Homeowners.
So, I'm across, I'm the, there's a, you know, like, near Beverly Drive?
Yeah, I'm trying to, that's why I wonder if you checked that across the street. I don't have a picture of it.
Yeah, we can, we can go back.
Maybe the aerial.
Yeah. See if I can...
I just was driving by and was wondering that as I went by.
Am I doing this wrong? I'm, I was doing next, wasn't I? This is an incredibly tiny piece of text for me to read. Wow, okay, hold on. Almost there.
Okay.
We really are almost there, okay. So these are zoned, you know, these are zoned commercial also.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think, you know, looking at, I look at a hierarchy of priorities. We wanna see Malala Avenue as a two-story transit and multimodal corridor in the long run. I mean, a perfect build-out would be all two-story buildings. So, you know, there was not an analysis done, because I think there was always an assumption that there'd be a two-story building on this site.
Okay, that's fine. That's my question, I just was curious. Second question I had is, we talked about queuing, but from the, from the delivery window at the coffee shop to Malala, how long is that queue? Is that two cars?
It's one car.
Just a single car? So if there's someone trying to make a left turn during rush hour, that's gonna, that could cause backup within the coffee shop area?
There could potentially, I think what John Replinger is, he was comfortable with the one car and the two-stage left-turn option.
And that one car is not sitting across the sidewalk?
No, it is not. It is, it is before that.
That's my other question. Third, you know, I noticed the, and I understand what they're trying to do with the parking spaces, but I'm wondering where, number one, what, how many parking spaces do we require for a coffee shop? And number two, where are they? Are they just mixed in with the, because that's, that could be potentially a long walk for somebody through traffic to get there, when you've got all the employees parked right next to the coffee shop.
Well, the answer to your question is, right now, coffee shops don't require any parking for our existing code, and I know we've talked about that with our code updates. What the applicant has done is, I mean, which often happens in these, where they've looked at all the required uses, and they actually are at their upper end of retail, not including the coffee shop. And the 1,000 square feet of coffee shop would have, really, even if it was retail, would have been four parking spaces for minimum. So even if you counted the whole site as retail, they would be meeting their, their minimums.
Okay.
And now they're up in their maximums, when you don't count any required parking for the coffee shop.
Yeah.
And that, I can tell you what section of the staff report that's in, if you'd like.
Thank you.
It's on page eight. And so the retail building has a project maximum of 25 and a project minimum of 20. And the coffee shop has zero for minimum. So they're at 24, which is pretty close to the maximum. And then, so if you, I guess if you added four more, they would be 28, and it would be the total maximum if you counted that as retail. So they have quite a lot of parking for their site.
Okay. I was just concerned a little bit about the proximity of the drive-through and the parking, and people walking across that parking lot to get to the coffee shop.
Yeah. One thing I do like with their layout is they have delineated, and is by code too, but they've really delineated the pedestrian system, and it will be concrete crosswalking when it's crossing over the asphalt drive aisle. So there'll be a very delineated pedestrian.
From the building, from the wing out there.
Right.
But if you're, if you're, and, I mean, obviously, if you're gonna park in this far parking lot on the west side, you're going to want to, you'll cross there, I'm looking at this, yeah, that picture. You'll park, if you're parking on this backside, if that's, you'll cross over and then walk along the building and then cross to the concrete. I mean, that's pretty much it. Just, just curious. And it seemed to me that I would put the, maybe put the employees at that point and leave the other side available for coffee shop only or something. But that's, that's not my call.
Yeah, you know, either way, there's always that concern for those couple parking spaces. You just, you don't want, I've been, I've been in drive-throughs that have that, when you have the drive-through backed up for a, I was at a Burgerville once, and everyone was waiting, because they had no way out. So, you know, there is some harm in putting customers that close to the queue. But there's a lot of, you know, people that work there that it's not gonna affect them.
Well, sure, and I would hope that...
spaces inside of the building, and it really is laid out for real interior use, and it's not just a drive-through coffee shop.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Next question is, how wide is the drive-thru?
The drive-thru, I believe, is approximately 12 feet. I can, I can look to, is that correct?
12 feet, so, so really, you're, you're not going to be able to see two lanes, somebody trying to pass the...
No, and, and that's, we, we made them skinny it up because we want, with those signs, if you think, we really thought about, okay, well, someone really tried to turn right, you know, you have the coffee shop building and the main building, and you have this little area in between the two, you would have to slow way down, almost to, you know, 10 miles an hour in Malala Avenue, and then turn in with no parking signs and a 12-foot-wide, single-lane car access aisle. So, I mean, it's, you'd be trying very, very hard to be pulling into that.
Yeah, and I'm less concerned about people turning off Malala, I'm more concerned about people coming from the parking lot to get to Malala instead of going out to Buckner, going out through...
Well, you know, and, you know, late at night, or, you know, I guess there's times when it may be closed and they can, but, you know, they, I mean, it's not they won't be closed, I'm just saying it probably be, it's going, very few people will utilize it, though there may be someone on off-hours who may, and it's set in a correct location.
The reason that I say that is because I was looking at that picture, and it looks like there's a crosswalk there, and I, that concerns me a little bit, if you have people crossing and if somebody's trying to cross on the other side of that car to get past them to get out. I'm wondering, would it be beneficial on that corner of that building to have a sign that says, "Drive-through traffic only," or something like that?
Yeah, we can, we can add that to, you know, sometimes you won't really know quite where the right signs to put and what to write until you get built and you walk out on the site. Because I, yeah, there's going to be some signage, but we tried to do as much as we could in the design of it to really promote that this is just the drive aisle.
Well, if it's wide enough, if it's, if it's wide as a car, it will, somebody will try and use it.
I know.
I just want to make sure that the pedestrians are protected, and that, and that is a, a concrete pedestrian walkway, I assume.
Yeah, that is.
So I want to make sure that the pedestrians are, are protected.
Yeah, we can, and if want, when, when this moves forward to comment and voting, we can, we can amend that new condition of approval to look at no parking or, no parking signs and drive-through parking only, yeah.
Okay, I think that's all I've got. Anybody else have any questions of staff? Okay, great. At this time, then, we'll have the applicant present.
I'm Glenn Batum. My office is at 15800 Southeast Piazza Avenue, Suite 103, in Clackamas, Oregon. And I'm also with me tonight, I have the owner, Angela McCoy, and I have a civil engineer with me, Harvey, and I also have a contractor with me, Dennis Gaffney.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go too much further, there's, one thing I would like to point out is that I made a mistake in the narrative. I said that the coffee shop would be open from eight to five, I meant the office hours would be eight to five. The coffee shop is going to have to be open like about six to 10. So I would like to amend that.
Okay. We can fix that.
Good. Other than that, I think Christina has made a real good presentation, and I'll answer any questions I can.
Any questions of the applicant? You heard our discussion up here, are there, you have any issues with our comments relating to that? I guess my, again, my, my biggest concern is, we, we bring the buildings out to the pedestrians for a reason. We want them, we want them to be using it, but I'm concerned that, I want to make sure it's safe for the pedestrians, and that concerns me a little bit, and I just, I don't, I don't know, maybe that's, maybe it's not an issue, but I think we should consider some sort of signage, and I think that's...
Yes, I, I would think that we would want to put a sign out there that says, "Do not enter."
I'm an insurance person, needs a sign.
Okay. Yeah, definitely would need a sign.
Definitely needs a sign.
Okay. No, I don't have any questions at this time. Do you have any comments or anything you want to say?
I just want to back to the office hours for the coffee shop.
Okay. Great. Well, you did a stellar job, Christine.
Oh, I still want to add, we want to alleviate the Dutch Brothers' queue at the bottom of the hill.
Okay. I'm sure we may have more questions as we go on. Okay, at this time, then, I'll call for any public testimony, and since you're here, come on, come up, please, introduce yourself and city of your residence.
Her email will be Exhibit 1.
Okay.
I may have a few additional comments.
And you are?
My name is Pam Kretschmer, and I'm a resident of Buckner Lane. One of my other neighbors is also here, and I hope that he'll come up and lend his support to our concerns about this development. My biggest objection is to the, the, the drive-through development. The traffic in that area, I'm not sure who the, the city engineers are or the applicant's engineers are that don't perceive any bottlenecks or, or traffic congestion as a result of this development. I, I don't know where they're getting their information, but if you lived there, you would see constant flow of traffic coming in and out of there. And I can just see, in the morning, I already sometimes have a five-minute wait before, five, even longer minute wait before I can even get into the turn lane. People keep talking about the turn lane and it being, you know, if, if you want to go south or turn left from Buckner Lane. It's difficult to even access that turn lane to get across into traffic with as much traffic as, as going down the hill north. And I'm kind of directionally disabled, so if I get confused on my directions, forgive me. But anyway, and then another, and so in listening to this, and I'm even more concerned now that I hear that the hours are going to be from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, because we're never going to get relief on that street. We have up to 21 drivers coming in and out of there that just reside on that street. Some of those are young adolescents that are just learning their way to drive, and I'm very concerned for their safety. We have a lot of pedestrians that come by, there are a lot of bicycles, there have been bicycle accidents at that intersection, more than one occasion. There have been pedestrian car collisions at that intersection. Sometimes, just right now, in order to see, to make that left-hand turn, we have to get so close to the corner because there's some obstruction already with landscaping or a pole of some sort, it's very difficult to see. And oftentimes, we're up there to try to turn left, and we have to actually back up in order to let pedestrians or bicycles come shooting through there, and that happens quite frequently, happened tonight on my way here to the meeting. Two doggers were coming through, it's dark, I'm parked, trying to get out to see, and they're running in front of me. And a lot of times, they don't stop, so I perceive some, some difficulties with pedestrians and bicyclists through that intersection. Trying to get onto our street, and, you know, if the queue is only nine cars long, those are cars that are going to be on our street when we're trying to turn left from coming up the hill onto our residence street. We're not going to be able to get on there if we're sitting there waiting for cars that are waiting to turn the corner to enter the coffee shop. I don't see how it, it's reasonable that we'll even have access to our residence on, in a reasonable amount of time. Anyway, those are my big objections. I also am concerned about the sewer and drainage system. I'm not sure if they're planning, and it looked to me like, and again, I just briefly glanced at this, but it looks like they may have some remediation to deal with that. But we already have some drainage and sewage issues. Backups into my home have happened when we have a lot of rain, because of the grade in that particular area, and, and my house happens to be kind of in the middle of that road, the lowest part of the street, and I tend to get all of the problems happen at my house, and I end up having to pay for them when that happens. Those are, those are my big objections. I, other than that, I think the development is beautiful, I think it will enhance the neighborhood, but I am very concerned about the traffic congestion it will cause along Malala Avenue, both, not only for us, but for people just trying to use it as a corridor to get up and down, you know, Oregon City, through, throughout Oregon City, it's going to cause a lot of congestion, in my opinion. Anyway, just wanted my objections to be on the record, and hope that you can take them into consideration, because as good as this development sounds and looks, I perceive a lot of traffic issues as a result of this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak for, or please come forward?
My name is Dale Heisler. I live across the street from Pam, of course. She pretty much summed it up, I totally agree with what she says. The buildings, like you yourself said, I, I'm concerned that they're too close to the, to the street. I think if it was set back, might help, the site's beautiful. I'm all for the improvements, there's no doubt about that, it's kind of an eyesore right now. It would never be a parking area in front of the thing, there's no doubt about that, because right now, that would just obstruct the traffic, just like Pam said. I myself had an accident there, just because now that's, now that, now that it's a single lane, you can't get out there. And when, when five o'clock traffic or whatever the traffic is, there is no, it's bumper-to-bumper traffic. And what happens is being that the streets are staggered. Myself, when I came out of Buckner at one time, turning left, it was bumper-to-bumper, so of course they stopped to try to let you in. Well, you get that center lane, and what happens, and I've seen it time and time before also, a car comes zooming real fast, thinking that they're going to take that other lap going off to the left. So you can't see until you get out there, and that's kind of what happened to myself, and so they crashed into me. And it's basically about the same thing, like she says, pedestrians are going there, and it's just going to make it all that much more difficult with all the traffic that's going in and out of there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak for, against, either, either, or? Okay. I, Christine, you have a question?
Oh, no. If Mr. Heisler could pass me his contact.
I have a couple of questions, I just wanted to ask staff, well, before we have this rebuttal. Have, did you review, did we review the site distance through, if there's landscaping issues on to the, on the right-hand side of Buckner? Left-hand, I think we're clear, I mean, they're far enough back, but to the right?
Um, you know, I, I don't know, we can look at the Transportation Engineer Study. Usually, site distances are taken into account, and I know John Replinger does visit the site.
I didn't see it, and that's why I'm wondering, because I was...
I believe it's a vacant lawn on the, on the north side. I'm not thinking of any, I'm not thinking of any vegetation that's there. I have Route Viewer, I can go pull up Route Viewer, and we can take a look at it if we want to drive down Malala Avenue. If you want to give me two minutes, I can put that up.
Yeah, please. Drive along. Now she can stop.
Mr. Chairman, I have some photos of that.
Oh, great.
Oh, if you like, exist.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Just begin to listen as they did it too.
Thank you.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, so there's a big tree.
This is the intersection of Buckner and Malala. Oh. Okay, so. So, and then, let's see, oops. And then we can go down Malala. Okay. And then I think, can look this way. And then...
To do Malala.
Yeah. So then I'm going to have to go find Malala, because we, but we don't have a good video, we can't turn quickly, we don't have quite those super Google Earth materials yet.
No, that's okay. We've got, these drawn pictures will help a lot.
Okay.
They'll, they'll answer, I think, I...
Okay.
Well, that's, that's good.
Okay.
That's the best I can get you.
That's just what I needed, thank you.
those trees get put in, that they are properly pruned for the first, you know, five to eight years of their life.
I guess I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense, you know, to have a 50-foot buffer from the corner where there will be no trees, but have lower, lower growing shrubs or something? So, you, you'll come from high to low at the intersections?
Yeah, I mean, there's our, you know, kind of design on the fly. There are specs on, you know, how far a tree should be from an intersection. And the more you remove trees from the, from the Malala Avenue, the less impact you're going to get for the purpose of the trees, which is for pedestrian security, stormwater management, biomass, I mean, all these other issues. And there's, there is always, to me, the issue with tree safety on left-hand turns is keeping the trees properly maintained as they grow. And I think if that is pursued, a lot of your problems go away. I'm not saying that any, there may not be a specific site distance, but I just worry about putting additions onto a specific intersection for site distance that are above and beyond the standard setback requirements because then I think you really start affecting the look and the effectiveness of Malala Avenue.
Sure. No, I understand. Okay. Any other questions, staff? We'll bring that applicant back up for...
I just had a clarification. When you do an upgrade on Buckner, does that also include a painting crosswalk there or is that part of the deal?
Oh, a crosswalk along Malala Avenue?
No, a cross Buckner.
Oh, for a local street, we generally don't do a crosswalk. There'll be, I mean, there'll be a new curb poured and there'll be an ADA ramp put in.
And then, the other item is on, one of the conditions was access easement.
Yeah, actually...
Could you explain that?
Yeah, not a problem. Actually, I left that out and I apologize. The A-1 Rentals building to the south. A-1 Rental, we envision development that'll happen on that site will be a lot like this but a mirror image of it. And so, one thing we do look to see is long-term pedestrian, I mean, vehicular pedestrian connections. So, people who are at the State Farm office can potentially utilize the cross street to the south and so on and so forth. So, there is another way out and kind of, you know...
No, I understand.
The more connectivity we can get. And so, what we've done is we don't know when A-1 Rentals is going to flip and redevelop. And they want to take advantage of their parking spaces. And so, what we've basically done is said the area just the back far corner of their project, just north of there, and Laura's going to get this up, just north of the, their solid waste disposal garbage area, those would be taken out, those two parking spaces and the curb and landscaping removed. And that will be connected once development on the other side is done. It'll be paid for by the applicant. And they know that they have those parking spaces only as long until, I mean, until the project to the south gets built.
Thank you.
That's something we were very, we're very excited to work with them on.
Commissioner LeSwo.
Yeah, I have a question to staff. And what, the exit, the exit lane out only from the drive-thru, it's a left and a right turn?
Yeah, it's allowed both.
It's what?
Both are allowed, left and right.
Okay. Because what I noticed in the staff report, I just want to bring it up now.
Oh, sure.
They, they address site distance from that, but, and they say for the proposed exit-only driveways on Malala Avenue, the engineer measured site distance to be in excess of 600 feet, which exceeds the recommended site distance of 390 feet based on imposed speed of 35 miles an hour. That's fine, except that sort of across the street and over just a little bit, there's another little street. So, if you're trying to make a left turn out of there, it gets crazy because there's another little street that's just slightly offset.
Yeah, and that's what the applicant alluded to. And unfortunately, I did not have that level of detailed conversation with Don Replinger.
Well, I think we need it.
Yeah, and if you feel that...
That's the dangerous part.
Yeah, if you feel that that is something that needs to be done, this, this can be continued to the December 9 hearing and definitely give the applicant any other direction. And that, that can be brought up because he did not mention that as an overall concern for him. He felt that the two-stage left was adequate. One more piece to add to this is the applicant currently has three driveway cuts on their site. Two aren't really being used, but they legally have three driveway cuts. And so, one thing we felt that we need the legal obligation to at least give him one.
Sure.
And so, one thing, that's how kind of we, we worked with them on this driveway location for the, I mean, for the drive-thru is we knew that they were going to keep one on Malala Avenue. And so, we thought that confining it to the drive aisle compared to having it just to pass through initially was looked at, do you have the, have the drive-through coffee shop on the opposite corner at the bottom southeast, well, the northwest, the northeast, excuse me, down at the corner of Buckner and have everyone turn in that way? And that was deemed not as good of approach because that could potentially back up into Malala Avenue. And so, they would rather have it, the worst-case scenario backup be onto Buckner than Malala Avenue. And just pedestrian-wise, that, this, the coffee shop has a better pedestrian connection on Malala Avenue, more people that would utilize it in a pedestrian fashion than if it was put on Buckner. So, there was also looking at it for multimodal reasons for pedestrian access. But if that's something the Planning Commission wants, I can have either John Replinger in person here at the next Planning Commission or he can turn in written comments regarding that.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question about the half-street improvement on Buckner. Would, would that improvement include any kind of pedestrian crossing upgrade? Paint, for example?
Well, we...
Commissioner Dunn suggested...
Well, we don't, I mean, I don't want to speak for Nancy Kreshar, but for the most part, we don't have pedestrian crosswalks on a perpendicular street to Malala Avenue. And I, that's just not our normal kind of design standards and so...
As I understand the upgrade, the, the half-street improvement, Buckner would increase in width by, was it 14 feet?
Yeah, I can get, I mean, it's going to be a full half-street improvement. And so, it's a half-street plus 10. So, for the most part, you're going to have a fully developed street with no curb on the other side and then the new curb and gutter on the applicant's side. And then, a new ADA ramp on the applicant's side. And then, knowing that when the development to the north comes, they'll provide their ADA ramp to the north. And then, they will pretty much, what's left when you're done with the day is just the curb and gutter on applicant, on the north side.
Thank you.
Okay. Applicant, you're welcome to come back up and rebut. Anything you've heard or answer any questions?
I was just going to point out...
Come on up if you wouldn't. Yep, thank you.
I'm the architect, Glenn Bethune. I was just going to point out, our first tree on there is back almost 50 feet from the corner. So, the site distance is going to be fairly good.
Okay. 50 feet. Oh, yeah, okay, that's, makes sense.
Yeah, here's our, here's our curb, you wouldn't be sure that here with that first tree, so there's really good site distance.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the applicant before I close the public hearing?
I guess I can elaborate a little bit.
Sure, please come forward and introduce yourself if you would.
Harvey Cummings with CSA Consulting Engineers. We did a lot of work with the city on this back and forth and they did an outstanding job. But one thing we should note is we have a different radius there, a larger radius coming out for that site distance. So, that's really going to open that up. And the existing tree, because the right-of-way gets a lot wider in there, really would be out in the middle of the street, you know, from this plan because we're quite a bit wider. And getting the density, you know, for this commercial zone in there, as the area develops, you know, we're going to be working on the Malala improvements plan and dealing with all the traffic. In the past, they've had the three entrances and we felt this was like the best possible location for them to lose two and, you know, still maintain one there. So, we looked at that whole entire area with transportation people. And there was one other point I wanted to make, and if it comes to me, I'll jump back up here and give it to you. Oh, there was traffic existing on this site in the past with the taxi business that was here before. So, the traffic impact of this development versus what has been dealt with over the years there is, is very, very close. And that's addressed in the Lancaster Transportation Report in here, which is the one that was submitted to David Evans for review. And that's in this...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Just one more comment in regards to the public comments. The applicant is proposing a swale on the far east side for stormwater management and the full specs for that will be turned in during engineering review. So, stormwater management and road control issues for Buckner Lane will, have been and will be designed to keep the water quality and water quantity at pre-development levels. I mean, not pre-sassy cabs, but pre, pre-development levels.
Okay. And I will make a comment. I did, I did forget that that was already a two-story building. So, my initial comment on two-story building versus two-story building was completely wrong and I feel bad. I just drove by and looked at it again. Unbelievable. So, let's move forward. Let's close the public hearing at this time and bring it back up here to the Planning Commission to discuss and move forward. Gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's enough of a question that has been raised about, about some of the traffic study information that I would like to have Mr. Replinger at least address for me. There's a statement in his report about 100 coffee shop customers in the AM Peak. And then, looking at the applicant's traffic report, talks about an increase of 14 trips in the AM Peak, which is added to the 12 existing trips in the AM Peak. So, for me at least, to have him go over some of the details of the traffic analysis for us and I guess as he goes through the numbers to address how the half-street improvements are going to improve the ingress and egress from, from the side street off Malala.
Okay. Did you also have a question? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you mentioned it. Talked to the city engineer about crosswalk?
I would like to have that question addressed as well, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Yeah, and the same question, this left turn out of the one, out of the drive-thru. That's, that's the one for me.
For me too. The site distance there.
Okay. Any other comments?
Comments? Yeah, I have some comments.
Please.
Just some comments about the project. I think, to me, actually, this, this project really illustrates nicely really what needs to happen along Malala. The MUC, the Mixed Use Commercial One Zone, the concepts behind it, you know, how it wants to engage the street and how this project actually does that. And then, it's got a really nice little landscaped edge along the building to soften it. It's got lots of windows. Just the whole relationship of sidewalk and, and trees and, and curb and building is, is really good. It's exactly a really good model for a parcel this size. This is a really good model of how it should work where the buildings are up at the front, the parking's at the back, the parking, excuse me, is access from the side road. And so, you know, for those citizens that are opposed to this because there'll be more traffic, that's really, that's going to be a function of all these little parcels along the law, along the strip where that first half of the block will become traffic. It's just, it's just going to be part of it. Now, if we can get people to take the bus and bikes, we can diminish that. But that's just the reality of the thinking on this kind of street. So, yeah, and I really, you know, there's some other aspects of this project that are, that are really good. I like the distance between the coffee shop and the adjacent building, leaving a little sidewalk strip so that people can actually come from the Malala side to the, you know, to this sort of inner courtyard. It's, it's just really, it's just some, some really good planning. Even things, and this is part of the application, but things like where the trash is located for the coffee shop and anything else that's happening, it's in this back corner here. There's nothing more disturbing than trying to drink a coffee and you got to sit beside the garbage can. So, to make the employees kind of haul it to the back of the site there is actually pretty cool. It even handles another interesting problem really that we're going to see from time to time is on Buckner, when you come down that street and you turn into this development, you actually have to go back up the hill one story to get to the parking lot. So, you have this, this part of the building that, part of it wants to be down on the lower street and then part of it wants to be back up in the upper level, you know, and how do you, how do you deal with that? And in this case here, I think it's the right answer because most people will park along the back and will come in straight through to that, to that floor plate. And unfortunately, you know, there's got to be a, a down someplace. So, in this case, it's going to be out at the street. There's a, there's a stair that needs to go down. And so, that's, I, I think that the way that they've handled it is really good. So, you know, for me, I'm really in favor of this application. I think it's really well-done. Aside from some of these traffic issues, that's kind of where I stand with it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm kind of the same way. I think it's a terrific-looking project and wondering if we can take a second look at, if we can address the traffic problem, not sure, not sure that we can, but I'd like to take another look at that, I think.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Dunn?
Well, I would echo Mr. LeSwo's feeling. When I saw this, I thought, wow, that's just what we want to see. And, yeah, I think the issue we're dealing with is, is there a way of improving the traffic situation? And maybe we need a little more information on that.
Well, it sounds to me like we're going to move this on, but I, I have, as long as we're going to do that, I'm wondering if it's possible. I noticed on page 19, there's also a comment of talking about the sanitary sewer and it says, "This seems to meet city standards." And I guess I'd be interested in, we're talking about the six-inch main that's going through there. And I'm wondering if that's, if there's something with, if you, if we can talk to Bob and ask him if there's a, if, if, if that's going to be a problem with, with drainage or if the swale and that's, and connecting to the six-inch main is going to be an issue. And that's, that's right above 16.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can definitely call back. I know that's the standard answer that basically...
Yeah, it should.
It's a standard answer. But see, the key is, is you get the details during engineering review.
I understand and I, but I wouldn't, I mean, I've got it, we've got an issue with it from, from a citizen and I, I think it's incumbent upon us to at least ask the question publicly, please. And other than that, I echo whatever he says. I think it's a great, really nice presentation, done an excellent job on it. It's exactly what I had in mind when we wrote the, when we wrote this, the MUC code. So, it's, it fits in very well. And I hopefully will be able to resolve some of these traffic issues and sewer issues and things like that and move forward. So, I guess with that, we'll need a motion to move this forward to a date certain of...
December 8.
December 8?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Dunn.
Second.
Second. By Commissioner Groner. Christina?
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Groner?
Aye.
It's got lots of windows. Just the whole relationship of sidewalk and, and trees and curb and building is really good. It's exactly a really good model for a parcel this size. This is a really good model of how it should work, where the buildings are up at the front, the parking's at the back, the parking, excuse me, is access from the side road. And so, you know, for those citizens that are opposed to this because there'll be more traffic, that's really, that's going to be a function of all these little parcels along the Lala, along the strip where that first half of the block will become traffic. It's just, it's just going to be part of it. Now, if we can get people to take the bus and bikes, we can diminish that, but that's just the reality of the thinking on this kind of street, so. Yeah, and I really, you know, there's some other aspects of this project that are, that are really good. I like the distance between the coffee shop and the adjacent building, leaving a little sidewalk strip so that people can actually come from the Malala side to the, you know, to this sort of inner courtyard. It's, it's just really, it's just some, some really good planning. Even things, and this is part of the application, but things like where the trash is located for the coffee shop and anything else that's happening, it's in this back corner here. There's nothing more disturbing than trying to drink a coffee and you've got to sit beside the garbage can, so to make the employees kind of haul it to the back of the site there is actually pretty cool. It even handles another interesting problem, really, that we're going to see from time to time, is on Buckner, when you come down that street and you turn into this development, you actually have to go back up the hill one story to get to the parking lot. So you have this, this part of the building that, part of it wants to be down on the lower street, and then part of it wants to be back up in the upper level, you know, and how do you, how do you deal with that? And in this case here, I think it's the right answer, because most people will park along the back and will come in straight through to that, to that floor plate, and unfortunately, you know, there's got to be a, a down someplace, so in this case, it's going to be out at the street. There's a, there's a stair that needs to go down, and so that's, I, I think that the way that they've handled it is really good. So, you know, for me, I'm really in favor of this application. I think it's really well done, aside from some of these traffic issues. That's kind of where I stand with it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm kind of the same way. I think it's a terrific-looking project and wondering if we can take a second look at, if we can address the traffic problem, not sure, not sure that we can, but I'd like to take another look at that, I think.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Dunn?
Well, I would echo Mr. Lejois' feeling. When I saw this, I thought, wow, that's just what we want to see. Yeah, I think the issue we're dealing with is, is there a way of improving the traffic situation? And maybe we need a little more information on that.
Well, it sounds to me like we're going to move this on, but I, I have, as long as we're going to do that, I'm wondering if it's possible. I noticed on page 19, there's also a comment of talking about the sanitary sewer, and it says, "This seems to meet city standards." And I guess I'd be interested in, we're talking about the six-inch main that's going through there, and I'm wondering if that's, if there's something with, if you, if we can talk to Bob and ask him if there's a, if, if, if that's going to be a problem with, with drainage or if the swale and that's, and connecting to the six-inch main is going to be an issue. And that's, that's right above 16.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can definitely call back, I know that's the standard answer, basically.
Yeah, it should.
It's the standard answer, but see, the key is, is you get the details during engineering review.
I understand, and I, but I wouldn't, I mean, I've got it, we've got an issue with it from, from a citizen, and I, I think it's incumbent upon us to at least ask the question publicly, please. And other than that, I echo whatever he says. I think it's a great, really nice presentation, done an excellent job on it. It's exactly what I had in mind when we wrote the, when we wrote this, the MUC code, so it's, it fits in very well, and I hopefully will be able to resolve some of these traffic issues and sewer issues and things like that and move forward. So I guess with that, we'll need a motion to move this forward to a date certain of...
December 8th.
December 8th?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Dunn. Second. Second by Commissioner Groner. Christina?
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Groner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lejois?
Aye.
Chair Powell?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming. We'll get this moving forward. All right, next.
Nice summary. Nice, nice caricature.
I think I lost my agenda.
Now we only have 278 pages to read.
Yeah, we'll write through that.
All right.
Are you, you're going to be staff here for a week?
I am for the time being.
All right, let's move for, oh, wait, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dunn.
Okay.
Sorry, can we just take a two-minute?
Two-minute? Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. It's a legislative hearing. It's L 0801, and at this time, we'll turn it over to Pete.
Thanks, Chair Powell. In your packet, in your very large packet, you'll notice that we've compiled all of the code amendments that we've been working through for the last nine months with you all. And the intent of all of these amendments is to do various things, both to implement the two concept plans that the city has approved for the Park Place area and the Beaver Creek Road area. Also, we're doing a general code cleanup to try to clarify some of our standards, and we're also implementing some new zoning, such as our R5 zone. We're also implementing some updated design requirements for various types of development, our neighborhood commercial areas, as well as our residential design standards for the new zones. And the, one of the new pieces of code that I'll be going over with you tonight will be the 1749, which is replacing our existing 1749, and the intent of that code amendment is to implement the nature in the neighborhoods program, as well as amend our existing water quality overlay zone. And for the time being, I think most of the changes that you're seeing in the, in this packet, you've already seen in the work session. With respect to Title 13, we can go directly into a discussion of Title 13 right now, if you like, and then circle back around to talk about the other code amendments when Christina gets back in. So if, and I understand that some of the commissioners also would like to talk about tree policies that are in these amendments as well, so we can, we can start talking about that. So without further ado, the sections of code that deal with trees that we are proposing are what we're calling in Chapter 12.08, Public and Street Trees. So our existing Chapter 12.08 deals with the community forest, and we're changing the title of that chapter to call it Public and Street Trees. And that exists outside of the development review process and provides standards for street trees and standards by which property owners are required to maintain street trees. It also would include the revised, the new section with respect to heritage trees, which, as you recall, we had a discussion on one of our last hearings about heritage trees. And what we define heritage trees are trees that are significant because they have either size, historical significance, whether they're a species that is unusually large or prominent, and these trees can be found either in the public right-of-way or through a public designation process, they would be designated as a public heritage tree on private property. So in those cases, a covenant would be established to protect the heritage tree. And much of the discussion with respect to heritage trees, as you know, was should the city just ordain heritage trees of a certain size on private property and then provide a process for appeal and notification? And so we talked about some of the issues with enforcing such a thing, and those have to do with mapping, how you locate where those trees are in order to enforce the ordinance. And then one of the discussions that we'll need to have with the city commission going forward when we discuss, I think we're going to have a work session, because in the new year, we will have two new city commissioners, and they will want to get up to speed on our code amendment process, and so staff is going to be having a work session with the planning commission and the city commission to go through some of these changes in the new year. And I think what we'd like to discuss at the city commission level is how extensive we want to go with the regulation of trees on private property and what ramifications that has with respect to staffing and funding. Because obviously, if we go about regulation of trees on private property to, beyond what we normally do now, we could expect to need to hire staff who are qualified to assess the condition of trees, both public and private, as well as we'll have extra code enforcement needs and things like that. And we'll probably need to ramp up our, so at least we could expect to hire, need to hire at least one person who is a qualified forester or arborist, and possibly two because of the code enforcement and planning aspects of, of passing that kind of a code. And so that's a conversation that we would like the planning commission to have with the city commission. And the, and I've mentioned that to our director of community development, and he's taken it up to the city manager, and they'll be coming forward with a date for us all to meet and talk about some of these code amendments.
Pete?
Yes?
Well, looking at other models such as like a Swego, do they have a forester on staff, and is this pretty common?
It's common when you're getting into the regulation of private property outside of land use process. So if you're not proposing a development and you're, you know, you're actually passing a tree ordinance that says all trees of a certain size are protected, then you have a, a need for a city forester or an urban forester, as well as potentially a natural resources planner or tech. And you also have to train your code enforcement people about the new code that you're enforcing on private property, so that it...
I was alluding as to whether there are other models in the state.
There are, yes.
Okay.
And like a Swego does have a forester on staff, Wilsonville does, and of course Portland does, but they're much bigger.
Are those arborist positions paid through, through the city's general fund, or is there some special?
I'm not sure how they're funded. I could check and find out.
Has, has, has our city attorney weighed in on this question? I'd be interested to get a comment.
Since the memo that we sent out with respect to heritage trees, that was the last discussion that the city attorney had with regard to those kinds of trees, but in terms of general tree regulation on private property, we haven't had an updated, an updated memorandum from the city attorney. I would expect that we can get one in, in future conversations. So for the, for the time being, we have revised the Chapter 12.08, and I'll just leaf to The, we revised it to include groves as well as individual trees, and a grove is two or more trees. And we've said for clarity's sake that if a grove would be two or trees that are separated by 15 feet, because, and that would be a clear and objective standard that we could enforce. We've also slightly modified the table that says tree eligibility based on size to bring the minimum trees that could be considered eligible, the size of those has been slightly reduced from the previous. And it would also include any deciduous or horticultural tree species of 20 inches and other evergreen and conifer trees of 18 inches or larger. The species that are called out by name are Oregon white oak, Douglas fir, western red cedar, ponderosa pine, and western yew. And so that's the only change from the previous recommendation.
So I remember we, at the last discussion, I brought up the idea where you, we talked about new street trees have a minimum of one and a half inch caliber.
Correct.
And I, and I think the comment was perhaps we, while it is a minimum, typically if there's a minimum, that's what will happen. And my thought is, you know, how, is there a way, and maybe this is the answer, but is there a way that we could direct in historic areas or things that we, that we are more, you know, like on a...
Major corridor.
For instance, corridor, is there a way that we could direct the city or the developer, whoever we're working with, into a larger tree?
Certainly, there's a way to do that. I think there's two trains of thought with regard to the caliber size. One is if you don't require the two inches, you know, they're going to go for less. The other train of, the other side of the coin is, it's not so much the size as the maintenance and irrigation that takes place during the first two years that is the critical aspect of it. Talking to horticulturists will say that, you know, if you put in the right species in the right place with the right care, it will gain that half an inch fairly quickly. And the key is to ensure that it's not damaged during that first year. But I think if you have an area along Seventh Avenue where you think it's particularly important to have a, a larger species, you could write that into the code.
Minor arterials.
Minor arterials or Collector Avenue, Collector Streets.
I'd like to, I'd like to look at that. Maybe I'm the only one, but I think, you know, when I, when we did Seventh Street, three trees got knocked down and they're only, you know, this big, they got knocked, broken right off the bat, and we've replaced them twice on a couple of them. So, you know, that's my concern, I guess, is, you know, we, we spend the money, you know, the citizens, we, we put the money into this, into this redevelopment, and then all of a sudden you start seeing these trees are laying broken over halfway, and, and I think perhaps, you know, maybe a larger caliber tree would have been more beneficial in that kind of environment, a pedestrian-intensive environment would have been more beneficial, I think. But I, you know, I, I don't know that. That's kind of why I offered that and had you guys look at it and review it.
Right. I think it's a good recommendation. I think we can definitely look at as a code section along pedestrian-heavy and minor arterials and collectors, and we'd be happy to look at that and more, and bring it back to you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
If I recall, the, the idea of reducing the minimum size from two inches to one and a half was shortage of stock.
Yeah.
And what else?
Well, primarily the price, obviously, and the shortage of stock in a, in a range of species, because we have our approved street tree list, and we give that to people, we hand it out at the counter and say, "Go to a nursery, look for these, any tree on this list," and they'll say, "I can only find, you know, two of the species of your 10 on this list, and the others are available, but they're only one and a half inch." So, and we've fairly frequently gone to one and a half inch so that they can complete a project and final it out, and that's been the policy that we're using at the moment. Is that correct, Laura? Yeah, because Laura's done a lot of follow-up on this as well. But that's...
It sounds like it's a fairly fluid dynamic. It sounds like that there might be some years when trees are available and that's eyes, and there are other years when trees are not available or specific species are not available. And I'm wondering, do we really want to write into the code the reduction in the caliber? Maybe just keep it to two and then allow the community development director to override that? Should, should conditions such as a stock shortage exist?
Yeah.
Would that be a more prudent way to handle the problem?
Yeah, it's another way to do it, is to keep the standard as it is and allow the community development director with discretion to reduce it, based on reasonable, reasonable proof that that's not enforceable, it's not practicable. So if that's the planning commission's wish, we will, we will do that.
I'm suggesting it to the commission.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I, I just, I mean, let's, let's go for what we can get and see where it goes from there.
Throw it straightforward, you can do that. Compared to some of this other stuff, it's an easy one.
Well, you know, I wish there was a better, I wish there was a way that we could, whether it be a heritage tree or a tree like that's down in Carnegie, those big, you know, beautiful trees that have been taken down, that we can't, I mean, you know, 31 inches and over, you've got to put eight trees in there somehow, and it just doesn't, it makes no sense to me. You know, it seems to me that we should have some, some flexibility to say, you know what, I, you know, we need, if you're going to cut that tree down, we need to put in a tree of half that size or something like that, and yes, it's going to be expensive, but, but there you go. And I don't, I guess, you know, I don't know, it just, we, we tend to, I mean, I, the heritage trees are critical, and, and just like a historic home, a heritage tree is, is very important in this community, and I just wish there was a way that we could have a way, you know, to do that. I just, I don't know if there is or not, but I know there's, there's people out there that grow these things and sell them, so the potential's there. But there, anyway, that's just a comment.
For the record, I just, you know, I'll refer to the table that we have proposed here. Table 12.08042 says that a tree must be determined to be dead, diseased, or hazardous and verified by the city in order to be removed and replaced at a one-to-one ratio. If the situation is otherwise and the tree is healthy, or at least can be pruned or, you know, left to live by making some slight changes to the sidewalk or, or planter strip situation, and you still need to remove it, then the number of trees you have to replace it with goes higher.
Sure.
But you're right, there's no requirement to choose a tree that's larger than two inches to make, for those replacements, or one and a half inches, but two inches.
Okay. Thanks.
So the, the second way we're proposing protection of trees is through the development review process. review process. And just Christine is back here, so I was going to say we're going to circle back to the other code amendments after we do with trees. Okay. So under chapter, what are we saying? Part of the, oh, that, that section has now been moved to a whole new code section called tree protection, which for clarity's sake is in seventeen. Chapter seventeen forty-eight, I think. Who's our overlay zone?
Seventeen forty-one.
Forty-one, thank you. So this section of code has not been altered since you last saw it, except to clarify language and grammar and remove any typos. This section of code applies to any new development, except for a new single-family home. So if you're building a new house on an existing lot, this is not intended to apply to that home yet. If it is a new subdivision, a new partition, or a minor or major site plan, then this chapter applies. Three ways that this section of code works is it provides developers with an option, three options for tree protection. The first option is our mitigation option, retention and mitigation option, where we define a construction area, and that as a construction area includes roads right of way, anywhere within an easement, and anywhere where a building footprint is going to go based on setbacks. If you remove a tree during the development process within that construction area, you replace it with a third the number of trees than you would be required to replace outside of that area. So there's a ratio for replacement, but it's not as much as if you are replacing it in an area that is not cited for structure or development. The second option is by dedicating a tract and placing a tree or trees, most likely is the case, and this is an option that's going to apply to subdivisions and partitions or large, or mostly subdivisions. And I doubt that this option will be used for a two-lot partition or a three-lot partition. So this is probably going to most be used for a large site plan potentially in coordination with a subdivision or just a subdivision. And with this option, you have a dedicated tract, you designate some party, whether it be the city or homeowners association as, or, as the party that's responsible for the trees in the long term. With this option, you can adjust your lot size, width, and depth in order to accommodate building envelopes outside of that tract, and density transfer option exists with this. The third option is a restrictive covenant, and this could be used in a situation where there's a site plan, there's no partitioning going on, they're just either doing a commercial building of some kind, and they're defining where the protected tree would go. Or it's a two- or three-lot partition where they're not going to define a tract, they're just going to protect the tree on the lot through a D or covenant that runs with the land and makes the owner responsible for the permanent protection of that tree. So essentially, that tree becomes a public tree through the development review process, and the city would have the right to replace it. Similarly, if it was in a tract, the city would have the right to go in and replace those trees if, or maintain them if the respective party wasn't. With the restrictive covenant option, the incentives are setback adjustments, so you're playing more with building setbacks, and you're not, you're not changing lot sizes and widths and depths. And we can go into more detail on these, but you've already seen these reductions and these incentives before. I think one of the comments that came out of the last meeting regarding this was, is there an alternative if somebody wants to preserve habitat through some other mechanism? And in that case, what we've done is, under seventeen forty-one oh seven five, alternative mitigation plan, we, the community development director can approve an alternative mitigation plan that follows the procedures of the nature and the neighborhoods overlay zone district, which we'll talk about in a little bit here. And basically, that's the responsibility of the applicant to have a wetland specialist or a forester or somebody who's skilled in habitat restoration to recommend a habitat mitigation plan or, instead of, a tree-protection tract or covenant. And that's, that's an option for people, too.
Would that be a, that situation we had in the Park Place area where they, they wanted to, they had an area that they wanted to, they were going to have to put some trees in, but rather than trees, they requested that we do, you know, plants and things like that, we could put those into a waterway, watershed area, something like that.
Right.
Does it speak to that in sixteen or in eighteen, or does it at all? Or does that comment you just made, does that alternative mitigation plan?
Yeah, well, this refers to seventeen forty-nine one ninety, which talks about that, and it, seventeen forty-nine ninety, one ninety is. Seventeen point four nine one ninety, which I'll, I'll read, I'll jump ahead. Is an alternative mitigation standard, and it's a mitigation plan report prepared by an environmental protection professional with experience and academic credentials in ecology, wildlife biology, botany, hydrology, or forestry. And then it specifies the num, the area that must be mitigated. They're talking about functional values which must be preserved, and we'll need to define what functional values we're talking about. If they were talking about riparian habitat restoration as opposed to upland habitat restoration, those are different functional values. So we'll be sure to make, clarify that.
So if a, if a developer had an area that he had to remove two hundred trees, and he wanted to, by, by our code, it says those two hundred, let's say those two hundred trees were all six, eight-inch caliper, he'd end up having to put in quite a few trees. And rather than do that, because the area wouldn't support that, as it did in Park Place, then you could, I just want to make sure that you, we have some, something here. This kind of says it, doesn't specify it, but it's basically an overview, it says it's an overview form.
Right.
But they'll, we will have that capability to give them an opportunity to mitigate in a different way, not necessarily a financial way, but also in bringing plants down in. That, that's really my biggest concern.
Yeah, and we also make an exception for tree farms and Christmas tree farms. So if they can show that it was a tree farm, a Christmas tree farm, as opposed to a first girl, a second growth type forest, then, you know, they have that option. And that's part of seventeen forty-one as well, there's a section for that.
Okay, thank you.
So if we would, if you'd like, we can review nature and neighborhoods real quick. We're calling it tentatively Natural Resource Overlay District or NROD. Oh, this is Section seventeen forty-nine. I think it is page, let's see.
One eighty-two.
One eighty-two?
No, it goes further up now, I guess.
Sorry. Starting on page. Starting on page one seventy-five. So the, the Natural Resource Overlay District is intended to protect as one contiguous system habitat adjacent to streams. The map that we have, and we can show this up on the screen as well as, what we've done in order to analyze this, this zone is to use our existing, existing vegetative corridor standards, which currently streams in Oregon City are protected under Title III. And we're, we looked pretty closely at our existing overlay zone, and we worked hard with our GIS analysts to actually determine where that zone falls on properties by using slope data. And what we've come down to is a pretty detailed map. Currently, what we have is a very large overlay district, which is a capture zone within which everything gets reviewed. And what we've tried to do is establish where all of our perennial and our, we've, we've tried to establish where our perennial and intermittent stream system is, and also where wetlands exist and floodplain areas. And so we lumped all of those water features in together, and then we looked at the slopes adjacent to them. And if there's a wetland area or a perennial stream, they get one buffer which is fifty feet. If it's an intermittent stream, it's fifteen feet. But that buffer changes based on whether or not there's a, there's a steep slope in it. So I think I'm going to come up there and get the microphone, and I'll talk to the. Thanks. So what we've done here is we've shown the green line is our existing Title III overlay zone, which is our existing water quality protection area. And the black line that we've delineated using GIS analysis takes a break-in slope analysis into account. So if there's a slope of twenty-five percent or more adjacent to a water feature, we measure the fifty-foot buffer from that break-in slope and then put a line there. So as close as we can ascertain, this black line is the actual vegetative corridor width that we regulate under Title III. And what, what we're saying is that this is the area that Metro actually requires us to regulate as well. And, oh, sorry. What Title XIII requires is that we have both a clear and objective review standard as well as a discretionary review standard. We already had a discretionary review standard, which we meant, we called it a Type II process, but now it's even clearer and more defined. So what we're going to say is, outside of this black line, if your development subdivision, site plan, home plan, partition is outside of that black line, you will not be reviewed. If you are a lot of record that exists within this black air, black line, then you are subject to review, if it's vacant and it's constrained. So we probably have a few lots of record that have not been built on, which will fall under our review process. And depending on whether it's residential or commercial, there's a maximum disturbance area within that, that black line. For residential, the maximum disturbance area that we're allowing would be twenty-five-hundred square feet, which is enough to build a single-family home. In the model code, that maximum disturbance area is calculated based on how much of the lot is outside of the area, how much is within it, and if there's a, if there's a proportion of the amount outside of that area that you can build in, then that reduces the amount of area within the boundary that you are allowed to build in. We're just saying, because of our LiDAR data, which is more accurate, and because of the break-in slope analysis that we've been able to do, we're pretty, we're pretty sure that these black, this black line actually follows our, our Title III vegetative corridor buffer, and we can say, if you're in it, it's twenty-five-hundred square feet for, for a new house, and if you're outside of it, then you're, then you don't need review. We're calling it exempt in these cases. For institutional, commercial, or industrial development, it would be twenty-five percent of that area for, for the whole lot. And in all cases, if you're developing within the black line area, you have a clear and objective mitigation standard to follow, or a discretionary alternative mitigation standard to follow under the code. And, let's see, what else is there? There's a separate section of standards for utility lines, a separate standard that applies to impervious, oh, sorry, pervious surface, pervious trails. If you have a pervious trail, you can build it within fifteen feet of a feature, I think. If you have an impervious trail, then it has to be fifty feet. The point of measurement for this, we're defining as top of bank, which is defined in our current code as one foot above ordinary high watermark. There's another definition in there, too. It's the, I think the Corps of Engineers definition. But where there's some discrepancy between those, or if it's a flat area, if you have a stream within an area that's less than twenty-five percent slope and top of bank can't be defined, then you say it's one foot above ordinary high water, which should be on our Title III maps. Where we are in the process of getting this map through Metro, I should talk about what are the acreages of habitat that we're protecting. Are you? Oh, look at that. Very good. This is really good over here. An example of, the metro, the orange areas that you see here are the Metro Habitat Conservation Area map that Metro has done for the entire Portland Metro area. And in some areas, in many areas, that boundary pops outside of our black line, and in other areas, it's inside of our black line. The acreage that we're protecting under this, the black overlay, the black boundary is approximately fourteen hundred acres. Metro's high and moderate habitat classes, which is the area that we're required to regulate, is about nine hundred acres. So we're regulating significantly more habitat that we consider contiguous and adjacent to the stream than the Metro Habitat map does. In some areas, it's different, but when you look at those different areas, which we're going to need to do some ground truth, and we are finding that it is either a canopy, an open canopy area that's implanted, or it's been approved under a previous development permit between two thousand and five and two thousand and eight, when Title III was in effect. And in some cases, it doesn't make any sense because there's a, for example, a cemetery which has, adjacent to Warner Melney Road, has a, has an HCA map on it, and that's a a, just a grassed area. So, um, I think, uh, we still have to make this case to Metro and show them our maps. We also, um, mapped all water resource files that had been approved since two thousand and two, and those are the yellow dots. And the reason we mapped those was to see where they fall in relation to our black line. And we've seen that the majority of them fall outside of our black line, and those are, the majority of those were exemption areas, where there was a physi- Yellow dots represent water resource exemptions, where somebody said, "I wanna build a deck. I don't feel like the water resource conditions are on my property." And we'd go out to the site and we'd do a, a review of the site and look at all physical structures and ba- uh, streets and barriers between the development site and the water resource that was showing up on the map. And if it was obvious that it wasn't impacting that resource, we would either exempt the project, just the area that there was being disturbed, or the tax law. In most cases, it was just the project, you know? And if they did any other projects, they have to come back for another water resource exemption. Our hope is that by defining the ba- the ba- the boundary more clearly using the LiDAR data and the known locations of streams, um, that exemption process will be much smoother and simpler, and we won't have to worry about these kinds of files anymore. It'll be a very clear process for exemption. If it's not a clear process for exemption, we have two procedures in the code. Um, one's called a Type I exemption, which is like the current exemption that we do right now. We pay a fee to the staff, and we either look at it on the counter and look at, uh, whether there's barriers in the way based on GIS system, or we do another field survey. Um, if we still can't exempt it from the site, from the overlay zone, we have a Type II process. And if that, you know, I think by the time you've exhausted your Type II, then you're into review. We can pretty clearly say, if you're within that area, you, you actually have to come in and turn in a review, uh, application, which would be prepared by a hydrologist, biologist, wetland specialist, whoever. And, uh, also mitigation plan with that. What else? There is a, um, a type of a variance process. Um, it's, it's, um, not the sa- not the same grounds for approval because it relates to the functional values of the, um, resources that we're trying to protect in here. Um, they need to put together, uh, a, a report that shows that the impacts have been, can be mitigated and that there's no practical alternative, um, much as you would a variance situation. I'm gonna go back and sit down and, uh, answer any questions you have about this.
So does Metro or the city have the, the priority, or the, I guess, the final say?
The Metro will have the final say. There's, there are provisions to adopt your own map with sufficient justification. They also require a clear and objective path. And I think they, they're gonna require that we reference parts of Title thirteen, um, that talk about the process that was used to define the habitat conservation areas. In our case, in Oregon City, um, Metro did not require that we regulate, um, upland habitat areas, only habitat areas adjacent to streams. Um, so those areas have not been mapped on this map. In those cases-
Upland, upland habitat has not been mapped, is that what you're saying?
It's been mapped, but it's not intended to be regulated. So, um, on this map, where the black area on this map is only following streams, that's the proposed regulatory boundary. Nature and the Neighborhood's other requirement is that you remove any barriers to someone who wants to use a, a green standard. And there's a list in the code, um, not in this section of code, but I think it's been in our other concept plans with best management practices, which are incentive-based and voluntary for the upland habitat areas. And those include, uh, rain gardens, connecting gutters to backyard trenches, um, use of certain types of building materials, impervious surfaces, and those sorts of things. And you can use any of those best management practices in any part of the city. And, so, along with our tree protection ordinance for development review and our, um, public and street tree standards, we're feeling that we will be able to substantially comply with Title thirteen. Uh, we'll have a meeting with Metro that we can go over this in more detail.
So Pete, did this map originate with the existing water resources overlay? Is that where it started from?
Yes.
Were there any other water resources added? The reason that I'm asking is that I had, I had heard, or maybe somebody told me, that there were some actual creeks in the Kenema area that were not identified as water resources in the water resources overlay. I'm just wondering if that's something that's been looked at as we go through this process?
There's a section in the code which is yet to be completed, and it says, uh, wetlands to be added following adoption. So if you have a delineation done by, uh, as part of a review, and it shows up to meet the criteria for, for a wetland, um, those can be added to the map. The way it would work right now, and Christina can correct me if I'm wrong, if we know that there's a wetland on a site and it meets the criteria as part of a development review, it automatically becomes part of the criteria for any subsequent review of a land use action. It doesn't have to be incorporated into the official map, although at some point, we have to do a cleanup and readop, re-adopt the map. The way the, is that, is that correct?
A little bit, if I could, uh-
Yeah, go ahead.
... chime in. Uh, there, the way the water resource overlay zone works today is, um, we call it the big amoeba, the big green amoeba. If your property, portions of your property fall in that green amoeba, it gives us the authority to review and potentially regulate, um, street, uh, the buffers of wetlands and streams. The actual wetland in the stream itself is regulated by the Division of State Lands. We are just the, the buffer. We're kind of the land part, not the water part. Uh, the thing is, if you have a wetland that is located outside of the green amoeba today, you actually can build to the edge of the wetland. You still work with Division of State Lands on the wetland. And that actually happened in a subdivision where they had an identified wetland that was not part of our nineteen ninety-nine resources, so we could not regulate the buffer, though they still had to make a tract for it, and I think they add a little bit of area to it, but we couldn't. So one problem with reducing the, kind of the green amoeba to the black amoeba is we do take potentially those areas that we could regulate a found wetland on that we didn't. I don't think that's gonna be that many of them, uh, but that takes away the, the thing with Kenema is, there's a lot of springs in Kenema. And if those, um, were not initially identified in the nineteen ninety-nine study, and what I don't know, not being a wetlands biologist or hydrologist, is if they meet the, the requirement of a intermittent or perennial stream. And the big problem with Kenema is, uh, that has to be identified as part of a site visit and a site-specific inventory. And that's not really part of this process. And so I know the Kenema neighborhood has been trying to work with the city commission and potentially trying to find some money, and, and we just aren't there yet. So, you, if we ever did do that study, all we had to do was amend, all we have to do is amend the map. You know, a Measure fifty-six notice isn't too bad, 'cause we would just be noticing the people in the Kenema area, so this wouldn't be a citywide, um, notice. But we could do that. But it, we have to, we can't, we have to have a site visit by, at the paid inventory.
Right. You're right. So, um, yeah, the map only shows known resources, known features. And in order to inventory others, um, there's a limit to how much we know is within the UGB. There's the National Wetlands Inventory, which we're relying on, and all, all previous Title III information, um, as well as our nineteen ninety-nine wetland inventory. So, um, section seventeen forty-nine point three-five is the section that's to be completed with respect to addition of wetlands, and we'll have to flesh that out before we adopt this. Okay, I think that's, uh, everything for-
I have one other-
Enroc.
One other question, um, or, or topic. In the Park Place Concept Planning Process, there was citizen concern about being able to preserve, I think, uh, the term was the migration corridors, upland habitat migration corridors for, um, well, I guess deer that, uh, that you see in the Park Place neighborhood so that they could get down, say, to a river. Um, is that any, is that, does that have any bearing on the nature neighborhoods in, in this process?
When it comes to what is a migration corridor, I think we're saying that the street, the riparian areas are the primary migration corridors. Upland habitat that might bridge an area between two riparian corridors has not been proposed for regulation on this.
And I, I think that was what I'm targeting. How, how does an animal get from this drainage to that drainage? Do they have to go over the top, but?
It's very difficult when you've designated one area for, you know, residential or commercial development, um, through the Metro process, um, other than have the developer propose it on their own volition and protect it as undevelopable area, um, uh, to create what migration corridors through dense urban areas, um, to the extent that they're separated by a large distance between the streams, I think. And, um, we didn't look at that in any further detail because we're looking primarily at the riparian areas. The, um, so in terms of large animals like deer and elk and those sorts of things, I, I don't believe that we can do that with this, with this framework, yeah.
Just to piggyback a little bit on Pete's comments, is, you know, this issue does go back to the Park Place Concept Plan and looking at the, um, upland habitat, if you can remember. And the problem is, Pete says, if you have a specific density, and so that, let's take Park Place for, uh, that area in specific, that was designated in R five area. And even if a small, little fifty-foot-wide linear open space area was supposed to be, it, you're still, and even if you reduce it to R ten, you still have, you're not really protecting the wildlife, the upland habitat, by creating that little corridor. That, that's the issue. That was a large swath. And so, you know, that's what Metro is looking at. You're balancing Title XI, which is urbanization, versus Title thirteen, which is nature in the neighborhoods. And what basically Metro has said is, inside these, uh, new concept planned areas or inside the urban growth boundary, Title XI is gonna win out over upland habitats in most situations. Now, there may be other parts of the UGB where you do have the upland habitat slightly winning over, but, you know, not in this case in Oregon City. And, uh, you know, on a design level, it was really hard to try to find a way other than mandating a linear, you know, fifty-foot-wide by three-hundred-foot-long, you know, linear corridor. And then, so who builds it? How does it get done? And is it really ever gonna produce its purpose? And so that's where we kind of got left with, was what are our overarching goals? And, um, you know, protection, putting our efforts into protecting the riparian corridors, to me, was the most bang for your buck, and producing something that, that, you know, really will see the fruition of, of the money that's put into it and the, and the regulation that's put into it.
Yeah. I think in terms of barriers to wildlife corridors, you know, up in, up in the Park Place area, there are currently ways to cross Holcomb from, you know, the fragmented forests to the north and to the east. And, um, but one of the primary goals of the Park Place Concept Plan was to create a road between Holcomb and Redland Road. And so that road in and of itself becomes a major barrier, and yet it's a primary part of the concept plan. Then you have the highest, well, the flattest areas of that concept plan designated for residential development at at least a density of ten units per acre throughout the concept plan area. So that creates yet another obstacle. I would admire, you know, any developer who can attempt to, to create backyard habitat in, in order to do that, um, but we can only encourage it. We cannot mandate it, um, through this, through Title, uh, thirteen. Thank you. If there are any other questions about trees, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise we can move into some of the design code and, um...
Did you have a comment you wanna make regarding trees? Did you want to make comment? No? Okay. Nope? Then we can move forward.
All right. I don't wanna do it.
Those are probably the newest issues that were, that hadn't really been fleshed out previously. The code changes that you see tonight are either the ones exactly as you've been presented in the hearings, uh, my, uh, and we've made the, the changes that you've recommended, and of course, we, we went through it again and again to try to look at grammatical errors. Uh, the one thing I, I wanna highlight on seventeen sixty-two, which I've been working on, and that, I do not have the, uh... The table contents.
Two forty-nine?
Two forty-nine? Okay. So, um, I've been having some conversations with Bill Kabeizman, our Assistant City Attorney, about, believe it or not, clear and objective standards. Uh, just to remind everyone, when housing is involved in the state of Oregon, we need to provide clear and objective standards. You do not need to do that when commercial or industrial are involved. However, if you have a mixed-use project that has one dwelling unit, the whole site is kind of housing, it gets a lot grayer area. And so what Bill and I did is we went, went through the existing code and tried to really take out any of the, um, things that were gray. And what, what often happened was, it would be the second half of a sentence, like, when applicable or when practicable, because it just said, "This will happen," because we now have that out of, of modifications to this chapter. So we do have the opinion building director, um, can, can provide an alternative if it's requested, but what we've done is we've just basically made a statement now and tried to take all the backdoors, 'cause we now have kind of the big backdoor that we can go through and provide alternative, but we have to let, 'cause what, what Bill is saying is, if we could get in an argument over what's practicable, if we were gonna deny a multifamily development, and that's a place we never wanna be in. Um, we wanna, we wanna allow any multifamily development, if they just follow this as a checklist and provide everything, they can meet the findings to be developed. So that's kind of, I have to think about it. So I just generally went through it, so if you see those last sentences taken out, that was my conversation with Bill Kabeizman, and that happened in a lot of the previous code, and so just trying to whittle that down. And some of the code that just, by the time we've, now that we've looked at this code again, we really don't need a previous section. You know, a lot of them, they, they talk about natural resources. Well, we have a code for that. I mean, we might, we allude to it like one sentence, but, you know, you don't have to add two or three extra ones, 'cause we have a whole chapter for it. So I've taken that out, but that's really the only substantial change. I just wanted to give a highlight, that we're always on the lookout to- There was always on the lookout to see if we have any clear and objective issues. So, that's generally site plan and design review. I can give it to Laura. I do know we're still having conversations with our attorney on our garbage code, the solid waste, and our two paths that I really like, and I want to work with our attorney to get what we need to be of having the directions. He's still uncomfortable thinking it may not be as clear and objective, so I think I just need to make my argument a little bit more. And then, if the City Commission adopts this as a policy, his recommendation is actually to move the policy into Title 8 with the franchise agreement. So, we're going to kind of look at that a little bit. We just, it's nice to keep it as a policy, because things change and sizes change. And even though if you amend Title 8, it's not a land use decision, so it is a bit easier. You're still bringing it up to a City Commission hearing, you're still talking about it, you're still, and it might be just a small little tweak that you could do through something smaller. So, that is kind of our issues for site plan and design review, so.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
You were talking about specificity.
Mm-hmm.
And I was reading through the zone classifications, and you had in there, in the title, approximately so many square feet. And what, I hadn't noticed that before, and can you explain what that's about?
It's new. It's in regards to lot averaging, like in subdivisions.
Right, but isn't that going through a process?
It is. It's just if, say, we get a lot of phone calls in the city for minimum lot sizes when houses are for sale and there's zoning designations. So, they would look up that zoning designation, it's approximately 8,000 square feet, so if they're in a R8 subdivision, there's a couple lots that maybe are 7,900 rather than eight.
So, if I come in as an owner of a lot and it's 7,800, you've lost your objectivity. I think somehow that needs to be stated as, this is what it is, with the exception, I don't know.
Yeah, it's changing that topic sentence, but the minimum lot size standard is still the same, so I could see how that can conflict, you know.
You know, really, at the end of the day, one day we will move to units per acre. We're not there with this juncture. But we, instead of, you know, minimum lot size, but, and then that's the problem, is with all these options, we're, we get, a lot of people get confused, because I get calls all the time from a Realtor and appraiser, "I see this site as 6,000, or, you know, 5,000 square feet, and you're in the R6." And so, it just, this was just a way to, not people, not get people afraid that they have an illegal lot, because they have a 5,000 square foot on R6. I mean, if it's been platted, it's gone through a legal process. It is a legal lot. So, it's just an education aspect. So, we can look at the wording of that.
Yeah, I saw it as coming in as a builder, and it sounds like, oh, this is kind of wishy-washy. But then, now at the bottom, it's more specific, so.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah, we can look at it again. It's not a problem.
Other than that, all of our changes were grammatical, or making sure none of our codes conflicted?
One thing we will be taking out, and I don't remember if we did, is, you know, we talked about the Beaver Creek Concept Plan going down their own path, and we initially had Beaver Creek as a zone that we were going to leave in, but does not have anything, and I've been given direction, just take that out altogether. So, if it's in this version, identifying in, I think, the chapter 17 or 8, that just talks about all the zones, it's gone, if it hasn't already been taken out today.
Yes.
And they'll just come back on their own and make all their changes themselves. You know, all these code changes do implement the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, too, of all the things we're doing, just like the Park Place, but Beaver Creek will, you know, they may have to do a little bit, some tweaks, and may have to create their own zone, like they were looking at, whereas Park Place utilized existing zones, because the product we already see today, where Beaver Creek has a little different animal, a little different product, so they may have to come up with their own zone. Though, most of the design standards are going to be the same for Beaver Creek and Park Place and citywide. Our next, and I was out of the room at the very beginning, but I think the goal is, on December 8th, to have the Planning Commission, you know, make your vote and your formal recommendation to the Planning Commission. This is where, kind of maybe even a formal memo for the Planning Commission that spells out your issues with trees or what you want to see. So, when the City Commission meets with you in January, early February, then they kind of have this written from you, or, you know, speaking, whereas if, this kind of gets thrown into the staff report, I'm a little worried it might be lost. So, there might be a way to attach an exhibit, or, you know, with your, when you make your recommendations, what your big point issues are.
Yeah, I think, I would like to, like we did on the comprehensive plan, is to do an introductory letter from the Planning Commission, you know, and talking about the history, kind of like what you're going to do when you sit down with them anyway, but let, have that come from us as a Planning Commission, that this is what we've done, this is the history, this is how much we've worked on this, these are our critical errors, areas, and do so. I think that's a good idea.
Well, between now and December 8th, what I would like to ask you is, what do you want us to do, and what do you want to do yourself?
Actually, you know, it would be nice, from my perspective, if, we'll come up with the issues that we think, I think, are important, and you, we can do that via email or whatever you'd like, and I, and if you could do kind of a recap of the history for us, that, I think that'd be great.
Well, because this is a legislative, all your, you could have, I mean, you could have ex parte, I mean, you can talk within each other for the legislative process. We'll just add your emails in the record, but that's no big deal.
Yeah.
So, we can, yeah, in the next two weeks, really in the next week, though, because we'll be getting the memo out sometime after, you know, Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, or at least something. I mean, we may have some revisions before we finally work on it, but what we can do is, maybe we will start off tomorrow and Wednesday and give you the list that we think, based on your comments, and then you can kind of play off of that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And we can give a good background. Right. So, we will start maybe to refresh your memory of your issues, and then, yeah, chime in, and we can help craft this together. But it'd be nice to say that it's from you, signed from you, sent, that these are our issues, because there are, definitely with the trees, on a staff level, we will adopt, you know, the, a non-land use code, but we need to have a larger conversation with the City Commission. And if it turns out that they also want to see that, we can pull those chapters out and kind of bring it back down to the Planning Commission to work on, and then bring it back up while they're working on the other thing. So, that's not a problem. We can segment it out.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, when we present this as a package, it's going to, you know, it will definitely inundate them. There's a lot here, and we've been doing this for a long time.
Right.
So, I mean, they're going to want it, they're going to want a pretty simple approach to it, I think, because they've got, they're going to review it quickly, as quickly as they can.
Yeah.
And there's specific things I'm sure they're going to pull out of it, too.
Right.
But, I mean, I say we do index as best we can and present it that way.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
I have a question about, you know how we've had also people with the, with the particular zoning changes? Is that a part of this as well, or is...
Yep.
Okay.
And so, you know, you have your recommendations, you've proposed to stay in the low-density residential of R6, and I do know that, you know, some of the neighbors are against that or maybe wanting R8. So, they'll be brought in the process again, and that will definitely be a conversation with City Commission, as will bringing up how interested they are in any commercial in the South End area, because that would be definitely, if they want to look at that further, we can bring that back to the Planning Commission level.
So, then, to recap, you'll put together a punch list, if you will, and then we'll, we'll review that. And we can do that via email, and then you'll consolidate that, and we can sit down to review it.
Yeah, I think the goal is, maybe by early next week, we can come up with a product, and then you can kind of be refining it as next week happens. And maybe the version that gets sent in the planning packet will be the final version. We may be able to present that the night of the hearing.
So, you'll be working over the Thanksgiving long weekend?
You'll be working over Thanksgiving.
Yeah, wait a minute. That's us. Okay, so when do you, when do you propose to have the punch list out?
Well, we'll get the punch list to you before Wednesday.
Great.
Oh, okay.
So, I think maybe over the Thanksgiving weekend. Take a read-through, give us your, you know, five-sentence comments, you know, and if you want to just, if you think something you're passionate about, and you want to write three or four sentences about it, and we can have conversations back and forth, kind of over the weekend.
Sure. Yeah, no, go ahead.
There were a couple items on a potential rezone in the back that I don't think we'd spoken to before. Can you...
Oh, you want to talk about that?
Residential to... What are those about?
Yeah, actually, in this packet, we also added another potential rezone. It's over near the high school. It's from property which is near the ball fields currently, adjacent to Glen Oak Road. The proposed zone change would go from campus industrial to an institutional zoning designation.
Page 308.
It came, it may have come before you. It's the property that the city acquired for a park.
Oh, okay. And then I saw there were two other ones that I hadn't seen before, the R10 to industrial.
Oh, these are, the, this is institutional. This is our Boynton Tower. It was done at the very first, we probably passed over it pretty quickly.
Oh, okay.
And then the other one is the new property that the Public Works Department has purchased.
Oh, yeah.
And so, we're just basically acknowledging the institutional. The one thing, though, to give a caveat on the area that was purchased by the park and just north of Glen Oak Road and Myers Road is, we are working with Metro to determine what its designation for area type, if it's employment or industrial land, because we need to do a Metro amendment to our measure for our, to Title 4 of Metro's functional code, looking at employment lands, because we'll be rezoning that to a park. And so, we may have to go through a formal Metro, but we are still confirming if it, if that change is based on it being employment designation or industrial designation. I think it's employment designation, which has a lower threshold. So, we're working with Metro on that, and we've acknowledged that in our staff report, that we may have to come back at a later time for Metro to get that. The other, we talked with Metro, and there are a couple of sections of the functional plan that we'll need to make findings for. We can make findings for them, things like housing, that we're meeting our minimum housing target. We're actually increasing the housing target, the Title 13, nature in the neighborhoods, that it's consistent with the two new concept plans. So, we just, in the revised staff report, you'll see a new page with a couple more findings, except by, other than the Title 4 employment lands, we're not too worried about them.
Well, anyway, the only other thing I had is, the idea of this code is, by, if it's done well, there will be no need for this committee. So, the only other issue that I've seen over the past three years is signage, and I noticed that's not in here, and, obviously, for very good reason.
Correct.
I know why you don't want to deal with it right now, but it will come up again, or are we...
What part of the sign code are you referring to?
I think the whole thing.
The whole thing.
The signs in Oregon City and the code that is to be applied. And we've had this discussion before, and we've talked about revising it, and I guess what we're saying is, it's not going to be in this revision.
Correct. I think we were thinking about spending a little more time looking at the sign code kind of by itself separately. Also, it's not in the chapter 16 or 17, so we were focusing, for the most part, on those two, since we had to do the concept plan.
All right, so we'll just deal with signs.
But that is actually one thing to bring up with the City Commission, though, because if they really want us to look at our sign code, it'd be nice to see the political support, both from the Planning Commission and the City Commission. Bringing up the sign code does, is inherently complicated from a litigious standpoint, and we try to separate that from our land use process. There's kind of, I see two issues with a sign code. One is just the heights and sizes, and the other is materials and kind of compatibility aspect, and getting clear and objective standards again, but one thing we don't do as a city in Oregon City is review sign applications at the time of development review.
That already is.
It's just clearly clear and objective. They come in at some point, and they apply for their sign permit, they meet the code, they pay the money to put the sign up, get their building permit, so we can't guarantee that it'll be compatible. Now, a lot of them generally are pretty compatible, I mean, material-wise, they're usually, new developments spends, you know, a lot of money on their signs, so they like to make, but things like monument signs on Malala Avenue versus freestanding signs, that is an aesthetic, but also a traffic hazard issue. And I can definitely bring transportation engineers that hate monument signs on something like Malala Avenue because of left turn and sight distance issues. And so, there's a lot of those, you know, balancing, as most things in planning, balancing different needs and what we want in the long run.
But the fact is, we do need to review it, and at some point, we, I mean, this isn't the, maybe not the right time, but, you know, we've been trying to review this thing for 12 years, so I think it's time we move forward on it.
We can add that to the punch list of your memo.
Yeah.
And that, and commercial, to me, I mean, outstanding issues are trees, commercial in South End, and signs that have not been touched during this process.
Quite a legal question. Does the menu list have a code required in the 56?
No, it does not, because it's in, it's in chapter 15. It is not in our land use chapters.
I have also a question regarding the public works and that redevelopment that they're talking about doing, and that, does that fall into master planning?
It is. They actually just awarded the RFP to a firm, and it's going to go in front of this body as a master plan. It's also in the McLaughlin Conservation District, so we're trying to find a way to work the stroke review board, and I don't know if they're going to actually make vote on anything, and they're just going to be reviewing it formally.
Well, they should definitely review, absolutely.
Right. But I don't know, because it's, they'll be reviewing a structure that's built in there, but you will be reviewing the master plan.
Right.
Though, we've already, they have, which I'm very excited about, a preservation consultant, David Penneyard from the Stork Preservation Northwest, who actually did the McLaughlin inventory in 2002. He's a consultant, a subconsultant, so he, they're already setting up for the Stork Review Board to meet with Dave, and you will be seeing the whole project when it comes.
Great. Good. Excellent. Okay. Anything else? Or we pretty much beat this? So, any, so it appears that we're going to, do we need to move this forward?
Yep.
So, I'll need a motion to move this to a date, was it, did December 8th? Yeah. To a date certain, no, I'm sorry, December 8th. Evil, wacky. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Stein.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn.
Aye.
Commissioner Gruner.
Aye.
Commissioner Lujoa.
Aye.
Chair Powell.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too. Before we, before we move on, could you, can we go over the dates for the Planning Commission meetings here, because there's been some emails going back and forth, you know, what we've got scheduled. Are we on the 8th, the 15th, and the 22nd, or the 22nd is a no-go?
Unfortunately, I have not been involved with, is, with Tony, I know Tony Conkle had been emailing you, did he have a land use action that needed to be?
Something needed to be done. He didn't go into specifics.
Okay.
So, I, it's fine, I just wanted to make sure, because I think, I think we're set for the 8th and the 15th.
That's what I...
Okay, okay. So, the 15th is sounding like it's just the land use action that Tony Conkle has, which on the top of my head, I can't remember what it is.
Okay. 8th and 15th it is, then, just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same calendar here. Okay? We're got.
And then, the first works, the work session of February is what we're looking for, for the Planning Commission, and that's, I believe, the second Tuesday of February for the potential City Commission, Planning Commission work session. That is subject to change, but a heads up on that.
Okay. And I would really like to do that, not try and squeeze it in a half hour before their meeting. I mean, let's do this right, you know? If we have to do it on a, yeah, I mean, if, let's just, I just prefer we have enough time to get it done correctly. All right. If, with that, then we are adjourned. Thank you all.